Call the meeting to order. It is the regular meeting of the Dyna School Board, June 13th, 2016. We do have a quorum. I did call that to order. Rick, can you kind of go through the agenda for us?
Certainly can. We have review of the regular board meeting on May 16th, as well as the special meeting on June 3rd. At that special meeting, we did accept the graduate list. We had a very successful graduation on June 4th. The board also made a minor change in our guiding change plan for the Gift and Talented guiding change document, where we added within that options team or the study team, some representation both from teachers, as well as the parent community. And then there was a brief leadership update discussing my performance pay, which action occurs later at. As for today, we have no hearing from the audience. We do have a consent agenda. This is that end of the year agenda, so it's quite lengthy. The superintendent's performance goals, the annual alt comp, we'll hear a report on that. We've got health and safety budgets, approving our health and safety consultant, lease agreements up here at the community center, our food service agreement, a variety of purchases. That will take us through. We also are continuing to move forward with Best Buy on an agreement, the rates of pay for our summer help gifts. Then as we move to leadership, the report and discussion, we'll do a leadership update, as well as the Next Gen Pilot Projects, is Tennyson will give us a report on that, and has some guests with us tonight. The board committee, some actions there. We've got policy work as well, that the committee has done over the past month. Then our action items, we'll be approving the middle school schematics, the public bid process for the elementaries are going back to rebid on that. Preliminary budget, we'll have Margot Bach present on that. Long-term facilities maintenance budget as well. And then our early childhood recommendations of Albert, and I will report on that. And then we have a variety of policies, again, that we're moving through. And that will conclude the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. The first item is approval of the minutes. We have a regular meeting of May 16th, and a special meeting of June 3rd. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next was hearing from members of the audience. We do not have any members of the audience tonight who are speaking. The next is the consent item. We do have a walk-in change on the superintendent's performance goal pay. Can I get a motion to substitute the walk-in with the one that's in the agenda currently?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we do have, now have the consent agenda. I think, Rick, you've already walked us through it. Does anybody have anything that they want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I just ask a question on what item?
Sure.
On Steve, Mr. Rehber's item, there was two lines where there weren't costs attached. And I was just curious if I was supposed to use the cost that was above those two. So the Lenovo, oh, I always go to quick view. But it's your attachment to under your item?
Oh.
Are those included in the price above? Is that how, I just wanted to verify that I wasn't misinterpreting it, that's all.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board of Education. That's exactly right. This year, unlike in the past years, the warranty is included in the price of the Chromebook. So I wanted to try to make sure that I identified what that price was, and it includes both the device and a three-year accidental warranty for that device. So underneath it, it said to include the following devices plus warranty. So I caught, I tried to add both of those devices in there. Try to make it clear.
I figured that's what you meant, but I just wanted to double check. So, thank you so much for that.
So, no request to remove anything from the consent agenda? Did I already get a motion to approve the consent agenda? No.
So moved to bring it to the floor.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next are reports and discussion. There was a request to switch the order and have Next Gen Pilot Projects go first.
I would ask Susan Tennyson to come forward. Susan's been coordinating our pilot projects for the past three years. She also has a couple of guests that she'll be bringing forward to talk a little bit more about it. We thank Susan for her leadership work on the pilot projects. I think it's the third year, Susan, we've been doing various pilot projects as we roll our strategic plan forward, and we welcome you tonight.
Good evening, School Board members, and the community, and Dr. Dresen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, in reference to our Next Gen Pilots. And as soon as I get this show going, here we go. All right. So, as you know, we have had pilots for the last several years, initially with our secondary program, and this year with our BG5 program. And we are happy to share some of the results this evening from our pilot learning across the BG5 program. We have provided our colleagues, who engaged in pilots with significant support throughout the year, to ensure that we had metrics in place, support they needed for completing their reports, their financial obligations, and our office met regularly with these staff, as well as on demand. A number of metrics were used for the pilots, and they are pilot dependent. So we will be taking a look at some qualitative data, as well as some quantitative data. And the reports that were submitted by our pilot leaders actually were quite comprehensive. And I have to commend all of our colleagues who are pilot leaders this year for the reporting efforts they made, and the significant amount of data they collected, analyzed, and reported to support the learning. This year, we have actually two sets of leaders who are here this evening to share their learning with you. And so I would like to introduce Kate Parardi and Paul Testertuck. Both teachers submitted the application for a personalized learning for all pilot. And I can assure you that their learning has been significant this year, and they are here to share a little bit of that with you. So I'll invite them to come forward.
Hello, Board, and Dr. Dresen, thank you so much for having us today, and letting us share our work with you.
And we just wanted to start by thanking you for supporting us last year, and letting us explore, and really dig into our passion. Again, thank you, Susan, for helping us along the process, starting way back to our application last year. We also want to thank Deb Richards, Erica Watson, they are members of our team, and they gave us a lot of support along the way, as well as Countryside 5th grade team members, who you can see on the screen, and Cornelia 5th grade team members, for just embracing this change, and giving it their all throughout the year.
So our summary points, just to kind of give you an overview before we start. So the 5th grade teachers at two schools use the gradual release of responsibility, and they move to, or from a real teacher-directed model, to a more learner-directed model. The 5th grade learners use things like Google Classroom. They created websites, and had actually an online e-portfolio, where they put links to their work, most of which was done in Google. And then Kate and I, the GT reading specialist, served as coaches to kind of work them through the process, and kind of be on-demand coaches for them as we went along.
So our overall goals were to increase teacher and student knowledge of the standards and their learning competencies, also to really increase the learner engagement, and have them excited about what was happening in the classroom, and have their voice in what they're doing, and why they're doing it. We also wanted them to be able to increase their mastery of the standards, and show that in evidence in their learning portfolios. And increase their reading map and MCA test scores.
So to get started, what we did, along with a couple of our colleagues, we created a summer workshop, and we boiled that basically down into one eight-hour day with 5th grade teachers, excuse me. And really, our goals were these three, to really teach teachers about the standards, so they could then teach their students to learn about growth mindset, as opposed to fixed mindset, and then really teach them how to move from that gradual release, from a teacher-directed model, to a more learner-directed model. And then after that, teachers were given a one-day pay to plan on their own, and kind of plan together, and use the resources that we gave them.
So the first step of our whole process was really to create that classroom culture of achievement and the growth mindset. Both schools did this in a different way, depending on their environment. So responsive classroom, the cares value, workflow was something that we received in January and February by Mark Wallace. Also, organization and goal-setting were a big part in the beginning, to make sure the learners knew that their learning was going to continue, and it didn't matter how smart they thought they were. Everyone can keep learning, and keep growing, and succeeding, and meeting their goals.
So after we created a, they created a real positive learning environment, then teachers started to really focus on the standards, which were the learning targets, in the Minnesota State Reading Standards. And we gave those to students, which they put on their own website. Here's just an example of the I READ Fiction, which are essentially the 5th grade reading standards.
And the third step was to, like Paul mentioned earlier, the gradual release of responsibility. So not just throwing them in there right away, "There's the targets, good luck." We really started at the beginning, gradually letting, adding in their voice, starting with mini lessons. And as, through the end of the year, some of the learners were at learner-driven, but some of them were still at teacher-centered. So it just depended on the learner, and where they were in that gradual release. So, all the teachers followed that responsibility, and as they went through the year, the learners started to understand their reading targets a lot more. Because in the beginning, in September, they're very used to the teacher just telling them what to do, and just read this, do that, but not sure why. So by the end of the year, the teachers filled out a survey for us, and they felt that the learners knew more, based on the learners rating themselves on each learning target, that they could understand what they were, and explain them to someone else.
And the last component we really shared with teachers, and they did with their students, was a lot of assessment ahead of time, to see what they knew based on the standards. And then really did a lot of rubrics and summative assessments. And from that information, we, they coached individual students to meet their learning needs. So, like Kate said, a lot of students were still in a somewhat teacher-directed model, but many students were also just being coached, and working on their own, and designing their own learning. And we found that the feedback was a really essential component of the personalized learning experience for students. And teachers found that they were doing a lot more, had a lot more opportunities to give feedback, and really knew their students a lot better by the end of this process. And here's just a quick example of what the I READ portfolio, one page of it would look like for a student.
So as, at the end of the year came in May, we asked the teachers, "So what did you think? Do you want to continue this? How do you see this moving forward?" And it was very desirable, that they want to try to continue this. As we roll out the new Making Meaning Reading curriculum, they want to figure out how they can still implement some of the things they use this year. They want to get better at the gradual release model. They want to continue to support and adjust the new groups of students in their classrooms, and continue to relate the work in reading, and start to move it towards math, and with that growth mindset idea, and allowing them to really teach. It freed up a lot of their time to really teach, focus on the kids, and focus on their goals.
And some teacher thoughts that they had, I can let you read these, but they found that it was really essential to kind of go slowly, a little bit at a time. And really, they took time to prepare, teach, and reflect. And having a team of four 5th grade teachers per building was really essential for them, to really going about this both slowly, and then moving at a good pace for their students. And then some things that, one thing that really came out of it was that the teachers weren't just using those things we had taught them. They were, as Kate said, applying this to math. They were starting what's called a Genius Hour, where they do research-type projects. So teachers were really embracing this, and applying it to other areas of education for students, and really embracing personalized learning in all areas.
So in our final report document, we have about 11, 11 to 13 recommendations, but this is just a summary of them. Really providing teachers with more planning time. They really wanted to work together more than the schedule allowed them. Provide resources, including training and coaching, and provide an information system to allow for self-pacing, e-portfolios, and access to the resources, which as we're getting trained this summer, and into August about Schoology, that could be a great tool that we might be able to use moving forward. Any questions?
Big readers, did you have to come?
Sort of as a part of the process, and sort of, can you talk about, a little bit about maybe a teacher who was resistant, and what sort of, what that change, how that change became about?
I can address that. One of our staff was definitely, had kind of, she said, you know, "Been in education a long time, been there, done that, seen all the cycle of different things come around." And so she was one, I think part of this is it's a personalized process for teachers. And some teachers went really quickly, embraced it really quickly, and others were more reluctant. And I think by the end of the year, teachers who were reluctant really saw the value of really giving students more choice in their learning, and saw the value of them designing their own learning, because they were both engaged in the content more, and learning more. And so this teacher said, by the end, she felt like it freed her up to really teach like she wanted to teach, and she felt really passionate about what she was doing. So I think that experience was really helpful for her.
And just to add to that, we started in the summer, and we had that training, we started saying, "We're not expecting you to be all the way at the end by the, by May. We just want to see how far you get. Trying anything new is going to be awesome, and we just want to see how that impacts your learners." So they all had different goals, and were at different spots by the end.
Could you speak a little more to the measurement rubric, and how you would compare students who had the opportunity to participate in this pilot, with students who, and their growth, who were not a part of this pilot?
I think one thing we really noticed is just the motivation of learners, to really be engaged, to have some choice. Just over the years, as I've been doing this, I've been amazed at how, just if you give students a simple choice of what to read, or something, the motivation just skyrockets. And learning is so tied to that motivational piece, I think that's been really crucial for that. So that's one piece. We're still waiting for MCA data from the state to be kind of normed, and everything. And students overall showed solid MAP gains, and I think we're not quite ready to show that yet. That's still being sorted out, too. But students showed solid growth in those areas, too.
Kate and Paul, thank you for your extra efforts in bringing this concept to life for us. We've talked a lot about it, and studied it a lot, but this is one of those key pilots, I think, that is a difference-maker, and really going to help us advance our strategic work, on making it more personalized learning for all of our students. So thank you.
Can I just ask, so how many students were involved in these pilots total, and how many teachers?
All the 5th grade students at Cornelia and Countryside, and that would be eight teachers, four at Countryside, and four at Cornelia.
So yeah, approximately 200 students and eight teachers, and then the two of us as coaches.
But there are only five teachers that participated in the responses?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we sent it out at the end of the year, when the to-do list of teachers was enormous, so we could not get all of them to respond.
Gotcha.
And then, Mike Chan, I'm sorry. Do we ask these questions of a control group, maybe the 5th grade teachers at other schools, about some of their, you know, what, how much do they get one-on-one feedback? So we have a comparison of whether it's really the personalized learning, or if it's just 5th grade teachers, or, I'm just trying to think, if we have people who are resistant at doing personalized learning, and we don't have a comparison group, it's hard to convince them that this is maybe the way to go, if we don't have a control group?
Yeah, we, that was not part of our pilot. We did assess students at the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year. So we do have the kind of before and after results, but we didn't compare that to students in other schools.
Can you speak to potential resistance in the students in changing, since these are 5th graders, not 1st graders? How did they take to taking more control, versus, "I'm used to the teacher always telling me what to do, and I just do it"? What kind of reactions did you get from the kids?
So at first, a lot of it is technology-based, so technology is a big piece that some of the learners struggle with at first, because they just want, "Ooh, this cool font," or, "Oh, I want this feature," instead of what they actually learned. So that was a big challenge for them at first, because they're used to technology being for gaming, or fun things. So teaching them that the technology is a tool to help show their learning, was one of the biggest things that the Countryside teachers talked about, and had conversations about. As well as not being done. So in order to get feedback, so lots of the kids would say, "I'm done, but how can we make that better? What can we do to improve? What can we do to take this to the next level?" Was a really big thing that some of the kids didn't understand right away, as we tried to move them from the fixed mindset to the growth mindset.
Were there more than four questions to the teachers, these surveys at the end?
Yeah, we had a few more questions. Would we have maybe eight or nine? But we thought those were the most significant, and we can share that data with you if you-
Yeah, I'd appreciate it. Any other quotes? It's hard to make, I guess, sense of some of it, you know? There was a question about students' understanding of their reading targets increase since September. And I don't know what a good response would be, or how it would compare to classes that weren't in the personalized learning program. We got a couple of three out of fives, and some four out of fives. I don't know what to make of that, if that's amazing, or if that's average, or, you know?
And then I just had a question. You mentioned a little bit, I don't know what slide it was, it was the sort of moving from teacher-centered to learner-driven. And you mentioned that at the end, some kids were still more here, and some, do you have a sense of where the kids, how many were at each level by the end, just in terms of, when we're looking towards moving forward with personalized learning? How many of our kids were able to move faster, or, not faster, but just how many kids were at it, at those stages? Just so we have an idea of what it might look like at other sites.
Right. Yeah, I think there was quite a bit of variability. And part of that is, some kids are just more ready to work on their own. They come to school with those skills. So part of, some of our work that we did with Mark Wallace was, aside from developing the growth mindset, those autonomy skills that they'll need to develop, in order to devise their own learning, and really master the standards. So I think that was an important part in the, but there was quite a bit of variability. And even the two of us, we are working also with our GT readers, and we still see a lot of variability, even with those students that we've been working with, with, for two years. And part of that is the personalized learning. Some students, it works better for them to have more direct instruction, or maybe to watch a teacher on video, or something like that. And some kids, it's a better fit for them, personalized learning, to be going more on their own. So you're gonna, I think we're always going to see some variability, depending on the needs of the students. So that's, I think, part of the broad kind of look of personalized learning.
So if I was to go into the classroom, give me like, three things that I would see different in this personalized learning environment, versus the prior environment?
Well, one thing you would definitely see is everybody, well, not everybody, many kids are doing many different things. Working on technology, working on paper, working in groups, working individually. So you're going to see them working on different things as they, especially towards the end of the year. We found that teachers had students working on different things at different times, depending on if they'd mastered a skill already, and were ready to move on to something else, or if they were, you know, working, maybe had to add more work, add more detail, so some work, things like that. So you're going to see a lot of kids doing different things.
You'd also see a lot of feedback, a learner going up to another learner, "Hey, Paul, do you have time to look at this, and tell me two things you like, and one thing you think I could work on?" You'd also see the student, or the teacher, calling a student back, to either get feedback on an evidence, or to have a mini lesson about a skill that the teacher has identified from a pre-assessment, that they need more help with. So mini lessons based on their pre-assessment data and feedback happening.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your questions, and for having us.
So Paul and Kate provided some insight into their experience with our oldest elementary-age students. And now I'm really happy to introduce Angela Gatkey and Marjorie Galvin, who worked with our youngest elementary-age students, our kindergartners. And they are going to share their experience with what was initially called Genius Hour, but I believe you're going to learn, they perhaps changed the name as a result of their experience.
All right, good evening.
You're on, you're good.
We're live. We're live. All right. So we had quite the adventure in kindergarten this year. And tonight, we're going to just share with you some of the key objectives of our pilot, how we implemented it, some projects, results, and some conclusions and recommendations.
Excellent. I'm trying to get this to look a little better, but it'll show up.
Okay. So, some key objectives we had, I'm not going to go word by word, because we have a lot to tell you here. But the key things that stood out for us as we were planning this, is we wanted to focus on students' divergent thinking, and building that. Personalized learning, we wanted to focus on problem-solving and communication skills, as well as working collaboratively, and taking ownership in their work, and viewing themselves as creators and collaborator.
Collaborators.
Collaborators, thank you.
Yeah.
Which sounds familiar to you, because a lot of what we just talked about is, comes up in the next-generation competencies that Edina is working towards. So a lot of the things we just mentioned are listed here. So as we're talking, you'll kind of hear little tidbits of that, as we go through what happened in our classrooms.
And we had to come up with a term to use with the kids. And so throughout our brainstorming, we came up with SPARKS. And the acronym is Students Pursuing Passions and Projects, Actively Researching, Redesigning, Constructing, Creating, Collaboratively, Collaborating to Build Knowledge and Share Their Learning. And when SPARKS showed up on the daily schedule, kids were excited.
They were ready. So in the fall, we really focused on building the mindset of this project. So we read a lot of books, that had characters, that had these different competencies. And we did a lot of open-ended projects down here. You see kindergartners on the second-day school, approaching an open-ended project in a team. During the fall, students also started to interact and work with their CSO journal, which allowed them to document their learning, and share their learning with an audience outside the classroom. And we also participated in DOT Day, which is kind of a global focus on creativity that lots of different schools participate in.
The winter took us into some engineering projects. We did a gingerbread boat engineering, where the kids had to figure out, using a variety of materials, how to get the gingerbread man across the water, so that the fox didn't get him. And through that, there was a lot of reflecting, having to go back and redesign, kids having a process of kind of deciding how they were going to construct before they did, and then trying out their patterns, and then their designs.
So this is one example, mid-
That one time I kissed a boat in my old school, and it was, had lots of stuff on, and it would sink because it's heavy. I'm not scared of fluke, but not all the way. We have to fix up where it moves with our hands, and get right, and we're going to fix it.
It's hard to understand, but there's a group of three that are in mid-process, and they're describing why their boat didn't work. So, also in the winter, we had students, we gave them a survey, so they could kind of do some self-reflection on themselves as a learner. And we took part in a dramatic play area project, where they were designing, and voting on what they were going to turn a dramatic role play area into.
And during that process, sorry, going to here.
Yeah.
We also then had the kids do a cardboard challenge, which was based off of the Cane's Arcade. And it's a little boy out in East LA, who created his own video arcade out of cardboard boxes. We showed the kids that video, and they in turn built an arcade. And our older book buddies came and played all the arcade games. And as- And as a result from that, the money that we raised, we used to buy cake mixes and frostings for the food shelf. So the kids utilized a purpose of how can they make someone else's day happy? And it was, it was by far one of the most empowering activities we did this year.
This is kind of what it looked like when they invited the fourth-grade buddies down. So the kindergartners are leading their games that they created. They had to design a game and write rules of how it was played and how many tickets it would be and all sorts of things like that. So this is just kind of a look of what, what it looks like in the classroom when this is, this is taking place. But obviously, the kindergartners are leading the way, not the fourth graders, which is huge in their little world as well. And then as we continued to work with this project, one of the, the big takeaways that we both noticed throughout the process was that students were talking a lot differently. And that was really apparent after they did some reflection after this cardboard challenge. And it was literally at the end of the day, one day, and I, we were getting ready to go and we had done it that day. And I, I just asked the kids, like, "What did you learn from this project?" And most kindergartners in years past would say, "We built stuff. We did this thing."
We had fun.
We had fun. You know, very literal reactions and maybe just a retelling of what they actually did step by step. But this is what our students had to say and hopefully the audio will work.
Today, we opened our kindergarten arcade and we learned lots of things from this project. What's something that you learned?
I learned how to make stuff and how to think of stuff to make.
It's okay for things to be tough.
It's okay for things to be tough?
Learn how to create.
We didn't give up.
We didn't give up.
It didn't turn out the right time.
You mean it didn't turn out right the first time?
Yeah.
Don't push or shove because then the thing won't work.
So we had to learn to work together nicely?
Give up.
Don't give up. That's a good lesson.
We had to get lots of people to come to our arcade and it was fun.
And what was our big Wonder Wall question we were investigating?
How can we help hungry children celebrate special days?
That's right. How can we help hungry children celebrate special days?
So again, that was connected to what we had done at Countryside in regards to Countryside Against Hunger.
Yeah. And in the spring, we introduced what was called a Wonder Wall, where kids could just write questions and put them on the Wonder Wall and then we would discuss them. And we talked about how sometimes your wonders can be really big. And from that, we then took 10 of the wonders and the kids got to pick which one they wanted to investigate. And it was, this was the one piece of the process that we found a little overwhelming because it needed a lot more teacher direction, a lot more teacher preparation and materials because it was so individualized and more specific. And having 10 groups of kids and trying to maneuver that at the same time was a little more complicated. We also went to the Works Museum to have more of that understanding of engineering and the process of design. And the kids from that, we participated in the Global Day of Design where kids once again use those engineering skills.
And in the spring, we opened our Ocean Museum where students became an expert on an ocean animal and then they were responsible for basically thinking of a way that they were gonna teach and share about their animal, which involved creating an exhibit. And throughout our process of a couple of these different projects, we were sharing outside of our classroom with our parents consistently. But then my classroom started sharing some of their learning on a global blog as well so students from around the world could see that. So when we look back at the results, when we look at surveys from October to April and we ask the kids the same questions, these are just some of our results that we're gonna fly through pretty quickly. But asking the students, I'm curious, I like to learn about things so you can see the difference in their responses from October to April. Looking at how they viewed themselves in terms of persistence, I can think of new ways to do things when I get stuck, how that has changed from October to April. I will try something even if I don't do it well. I know I can do many things and I use my imagination. And then, we didn't ask this in October, but we should have. I can work well with other kindergartners. So this was their response in April. And then when we were discussing this project, we thought, "Oh, my gosh, it would've been great if we would've had another kindergarten class." And then we did down the hallway, so.
And so we did a control compared to the control group of kindergartners for the spring results. And what we found was quite interesting with our pilot group along with the control group where, with persistence. And also the next slide, trying to do something well, trying to do something even if I don't do it well. This slide really stood out to us that there wasn't one child in Angela or my class that would, said they would never try something.
Yeah.
And then also using the imagination, just, you know, how there was, there's a distinct contrast.
So we were, it suggests that students in the pilot group reported being more persistent risk-takers and more creative. Lots of discussion. So just some key highlights here. Students were highly engaged. I mean, they liked, I mean, it was like, "Are we doing Sparks today? Is it today? Are we doing Sparks? Is this happening today?" They always wanted to know when that was happening. We found that large group project-based learning inquiries were more successful in terms of even though kids were doing a lot of things on their own and kind of doing their own path, as a teacher, it was a little bit easier to bop around knowing where kids could be potentially. Students were creating digitally, sharing their learning with CSO. They were embedding reflection and feedback and connecting with meaningful audiences outside the classroom. And that adult support in the room was, was huge.
Yeah.
I know we had some adults in here in our classroom sometimes, like, "Couldn't you just get out a worksheet? Could you just pass that out instead?" And just the transition we made to from realizing, you know, the ideal of getting to a true Genius Hour thing in kindergarten, there's still some kinks to go with that. And how do you make that work best with, you know, our littlest five and six-year-olds?
But some definite conclusions that we had with being intentional with key objectives really impacted how our students viewed themselves as learners. You know, the language moved beyond that literal and showed more deep reflection on their process for their learning. You know, they were, they were highly motivated and engaged when, and were asking when that spark was happening. And we saw that energy carry over into other parts of their day. And even though it wasn't Spark time, if it was Explore time or Tinker time, they were embedding those skills on their own independently. And the reflections and sharing was just really big.
So recommendations, so to continue to explore project-based learning and how to best support it with kindergartners. And, you know, again, having multiple adults in the room that know the students well was a key factor into just things kind of running smoothly too. And looking at the pilot too, you know, we had planned out what we thought we might allocate money towards, but we found a lot of, we spent a lot of time just collaborating together and just having some real in-depth discussions about how is this gonna, gonna take place and work? And there's funding for supplies that we had, but I think, you know, pretty minimal in terms of what that cost is. So we, we have a really, really thorough plan that we've laid out that kindergartners, teachers in around, around the district could take and kind of, you know.
Use as a.
Use as a guide.
As a map.
And then I think, you know, a key to this too was supporting technology tools for young learners that make it easy and accessible then, for them to share their learning was really impactful. And just giving kindergarten, other kindergarten classrooms an opportunity to connect globally with peers. My classroom did that to a larger extent and I think that was really powerful for them to connect with peers from around the globe, so.
Any questions? Yeah, that was fabulous. I love how you included the control group versus your, the students in your classes. That was fascinating to seek, especially in our youngest learners entering the system. And I hope that, that develops those kids to continue to take those challenges in those classes all the way up through high school where they're not sure they're ready for it, but they want to try it anyway. One of the things I was wondering about, you were talking about how the kids wanted to do Sparks and when, even though it wasn't Sparks, you were starting to see them embedded in other areas. How do you see that, especially for our emerging readers? Did it, did it allow the students to take a different approach to learning to read, something that could be challenging for some? You know, the one area where I saw a large growth, it was with writing. Writing? With my kids. Because paper was out and, you know, I had some students who really have that, had that creative flow and juices and a student in particular who came in not even knowing all her letters or sounds of the alphabet and was just writing amazingly. And it was signs and where it started, where I started seeing her do those types of independent, pursuing that skill independently was when we were doing Spark time. And, and she was at the writing center all the time and asking about that. And she's going to have a cardboard arcade at a rummage sale this summer.
And I, I would agree with that. And, you know, it was interesting because a lot, a lot of the projects we did, there was a writing component just because it was necessary. They had to have a sign for their cardboard game. They had to write down the steps of how they were gonna play this cardboard game. You know, so kids that maybe during a formal writer's workshop time are like, oh, you know, they were like, "Okay, I gotta get my plan down before I go get my materials." So just having that purpose, real authentic purpose of why I'm doing this writing embedded, I think, was huge. And I noticed a lot too, and we mentioned this, but there was just a very different mindset with them being risk-takers and persisting and persevering, which, you know, I told my kindergartners, adults struggle with that.
Yeah.
You know, so if they kind of have that sense of, that at five is beneficial.
And this also really empowered children who academically weren't strong with letters and reading and things, but have that spatial sense. And I think back to the gingerbread boat experience. And I have, who, two children at that time who were non-readers, really struggling with letters and sounds. They had the most persistence in creating and spent the longest time and felt very successful. And for me to empower them, I mean, they, they walked out just so excited about learning that day because it was something that they really could do. No, that's great.
I would agree with everything Sarah said. So is this an hour? Like, how much time? Can you sort of give me just a sense of the week, once a week or?
So, so like an original model of Genius Hour would be like an hour a week at a certain time. But we, we found that at the beginning, we were, we were doing that as we were kind of planting the seeds of, you know, this whole thing. But then we found it a little bit easier to kind of do some groupings together. Like, for example, during the cardboard challenge, it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't really make sense for kindergartners to say, "We're gonna do this for an hour right now and then we're gonna put it away for a week." And, you know, they were like, "No, we need to get back to that." So we kind of, depending on the project, sometimes it took place, you know, three times a week for 40 minutes and then maybe we wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be that in-depth for the next two weeks. But then it was, it kind of flowed depending on what, what it entailed.
And it sounded like, and what the kids were excited about. So you, you guys were responding to their engagement.
Yes.
That's great.
That was throughout the year?
Yeah.
And how many kids, how many kindergartners?
Twenty-two, then you had.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one. So approximately forty-four.
Forty-four.
No, it's really the kind of thing we want kindergartners to be doing, fun, projects, some persistence, some teamwork. I had a question about the, I guess, comparison to the control group. I saw three questions to the control group. Were there only three or were there more as well?
So those were the three that stuck out to us.
Right.
They were asked all of the questions and the other ones we noticed, you know, they weren't that blatant. So, you know, we could, we could infer that maybe that's just how kindergarten grows that they.
Sure.
You know, have maybe that growth. Obviously, they were in our building, so, you know, they have similar, similar teaching styles and approaches, so. But those were the three that really, really stuck out to us.
And I forgot to ask this earlier with the other group, but did you get a chance to partner with our Director of Research and Evaluation as you were coming up with questions that would evaluate whether this was a success, if it met the goals, or where to work on next year for further improvements?
We should add that to our list. No, we talked, we talked with Susan a lot and she helped guide us in terms of what, you know, what would be a good measure, but.
Okay.
We could do that.
That's exciting stuff.
It's extraordinary on every level. Thank you.
It was also a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. You know, I think, I think that was really exciting. I mean, I would run over to Margie and be like, "Oh, my gosh, did you see this? How did it go for you?" You know? So I think just that spark, I think for us too, was just, you know, I think that's, that's a big shift that could take place is the teacher isn't always in control. You know, and we had a game plan, but really the driving force was the students and where they were gonna take it. So I think that's a big shift, but.
I mean, what, what more could we ask for than, than our kids to have Spark, but for our teachers to have that too? I mean, that's just, it's so overjoying to hear that.
Thank you. Great work. Enjoy your summers.
So as you can tell, there was a lot of energy around our pilots this year and significant learning for our students and for our staff. As we look to evaluate what happens next with our BG5 pilots, we are looking for evidence of positive impact on the learner experience, learning that opportunities for our students and for our staff align to our next-generation educational competencies. And then the pilots that have outcomes that clearly, clearly support advancement of our next-gen vision. So as we look at what are the next steps, we evaluate each of the pilots based on the report that has been submitted. And there are three options. We either advance the pilot, meaning that we are, we see evidence that it does support our educational competencies and our next-gen vision. And we look at ways that we could potentially build that across a program, a grade level, a site, our district. Continued study where we perhaps need more information about those aspects of the student experience. And we also have the option to archive because we know as we enter a pilot, it is about learning and sometimes our learning suggests that the pilot was not a good fit or we did not land with the intended outcomes. So for our BG5 pilots this year, we're looking to advance multiple pilots, gamification, the Genius Hour project-based learning, which we just heard about, and the personalized learning for all, which we also were lucky enough to hear about this evening. Smart Pre-K, which is at our, excuse me, our preschool program, and the school-wide PBIS. And then the World Savvy Classroom. All six of those pilots had very positive outcomes and we have data suggesting that there is reason to believe it's a positive learner experience and aligns with our next-generation educational competencies. And our department would recommend that we continue to explore how to use this learning to advance our next-gen Edina public schools. We also have three pilots that we are recommending continued study as there either was not a complete dataset or there's some need for additional learning. And I'll pause here for questions that you might have. The other note that I would like to share is that our May-term pilot, in the second year, that report will be shared with you in July. The data is still being compiled and analyzed.
Susan, will you be sharing the data with us that you have in these other areas? I know we got to see some of the data tonight, obviously, from the two pilots where they presented, but I'm wondering about the other ones.
So we have a complete set of reports prepared by each of the pilot leaders and we will, I'm happy to share those.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's great learning.
And can I just ask, so I'm just a little, what does advance mean? I'm not quite sure. Does it mean we're, yeah, I'll just, what does that mean?
So the learning that was part of the pilot suggests that there is, at least parts of those pilots that could be implemented at a building level, a grade level. And to use, utilize that learning to further our next-generation Edina public schools. So there may be a piece, for example, with the Genius Hour. If we were, to use that as an example, we see tremendous evidence of increased learner engagement and ownership of their learning. And to utilize that and perhaps expand it across. And to utilize that and perhaps expand it across more kindergarten classrooms. Or perhaps there is a fourth grade class that would, or team that would like to engage in that kind of learning, to use the evidence we have, the learning that is already in place, to support another team in doing that work. Okay?
And are you, I guess, moving forward, looking to work with Donna a little bit more is to, I guess, figure out what specific questions require what sort of data to really give us an idea of whether it's indicating a lot or not indicating a lot, if it's exciting or if it's average? Because I'm having a hard time with some of the, you know, figures we've been showing to knowing how to react to them.
I appreciate your question there. So much of our pilot learning is really about gathering baseline data. And of course, we can, in hindsight, say, we maybe should have added that metric.
Right.
And so we use that learning as we move forward. So I anticipate if we are moving forward with another Genius Hour-type pilot, we would definitely embed metrics for a control group. So, and that makes sense that we would do that. So I will be certainly consulting with my teaching and learning colleagues as we move forward. We, I feel we made significant improvements this year with the BG5 pilot and that process, the support that our teachers received and the expectations around the reporting. And that was fueled by our learning last year with our secondary study and the secondary pilots. So piloting is almost a pilot in and of itself. It's constant learning and continuous improvement.
Absolutely. And it's naturally difficult with education anyway, so many different variables.
True.
Appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely, thank you.
Other questions?
So very quickly, I will run through our recess study. Our district engaged in a study of our recess program across the six elementary sites this spring. And the purpose of the study was to gather baseline data again at all of our elementary sites, to include the two sites that had a recess pilot in place earlier this year, and to utilize that data to inform site-based decision-making in terms of the recess experience for students. And to ensure that regardless of the site, that the recess experience aligned to vision. And our vision is articulated here. And we had multiple data sources as we gathered this information. Discipline referrals during the period of April 4th through April 15th, and our six elementary principals came to an agreement of what a disciplinary, a disciplinary referral would be that they would monitor. So it would not be a student being sent to the office just for a quick chat. It would be something that would require significant intervention. Health office referrals were monitored and tabulated from the beginning of the year through the end of spring break. And again, here we found that there are a variety of practices in the way that data is gathered and even how an injury might be defined. We reviewed the staffing model, gathered some input from our administrators in terms of strengths and challenges to their recess program from their perspective. And we also ran focus groups across the sixth grade, excuse me, the six elementary sites. Baseline data, and I will not spend a lot of time on this this evening, our elementary principals will be using this data to ascertain next steps and how to inform the recess experience. I would like to note on this slide, if you look at Concord, you can see that they're at 100%. And what that means is that of their two discipline referrals during that two-week period, both of them were recess-related. So this slide is indicating of the referrals during that two-week period, how many of them were recess-related. Health office visits.
Quick, quick question. Did each of these schools have a recess pilot at it?
No.
No. We had recess pilots at Concord and at Normandale.
That's what I thought.
The other four did not.
Just wanted to.
Yep.
Make that clear.
Absolutely, thank you.
And this is only a two-week period that we looked at?
It was a two-week period for the purpose of looking at disciplinary referrals specifically related to this evaluation that we did.
So do we have data prior to doing the pilots?
We have data from some sites. Again, the clarification really was about how to define a discipline referral for the purpose of this gathering of information. And so our six principals came to consensus on what that definition was. And as we move forward, we will be gathering that data in the same way.
We could recode prior to, we could go back to last year.
That's a possibility.
And just recode using whatever definition you've determined.
That is a possibility. Okay? And then the staffing model, as we look across our six elementary sites, you see that there are a lot of commonalities in the way that they staff and also some differences to meet the needs of the individual sites.
I was just going to ask a question on that one. When we use the term paraprofessionals, I'm assuming these are paraprofessionals who have certain other assignments throughout the day for specific kids or help in the classroom. So I'm assuming they're pulled from that and then added to the playground? Is that correct?
I think paraprofessionals come from a variety of sources and I don't have specifics at this time to answer your question with confidence.
Okay. Thanks.
So I had the pleasure of facilitating the focus groups with students. And we ran the focus groups over the course of several weeks. And the groups were 10 to 15 students. We did grade three, grade four, and grade five, and they were grade level-specific. It was a stratified random sample and we had great responses and high energy from our student participants. And just a couple of highlights here, the findings suggest in, in general, that students love recess. For some of them, it's their favorite part of the day. They do their voice, there's a desire for a longer recess that was across the six sites, more and improved equipment, an ongoing voice in their recess experience, improved relationship with recess staff, and more field day-type experiences. We had lots and lots of other great suggestions and we have documented all of those, to include an ice cream parlor outside and a warming hut for the winter, those kinds of very creative thinking. Site-specific, when asked the question what the role of the supervisor was, this was an interesting finding. We found that at Normandale and at Concord, our students in general could clearly articulate the role of the supervisor, to include playing with children, teaching them new games, keeping them safe, helping with conflict resolution, ensuring all students had the opportunity to play. When that question was posed to the other four sites, our students had a, had a harder time articulating what the role of the playground supervisor was. But across all of the sites, students indicated a strong desire for more relationship, more personal relationship with their supervisors. And there was also an indication that, at least for some students, there are some playground limitations, especially for older students at Normandale. They felt the space was not large enough for them to be able to really run and play. So some recommendations here in general, these are recommendations to the sites for the administrators and their teams to consider as they implement next generation recess aligned to vision. So some clear expectations to ensure an inclusive and respectful experience. We've embedded here the opportunity for students to be engaged in a leadership role through a, perhaps a student recess committee, professional development for the recess supervisors, and we heard that from our principals as well. And then maximizing resources and partnerships so that we have an efficient and effective staffing model. For the recess monitors, this really comes from the students. Ensure an inclusive recess experience for all, facilitate positive relationships. Our student supervisors to be proactively teaching and modeling conflict resolution skills and to actively engage and play with them. And then just some recommendations around equipment and resources. Our kids said they'd love to have more balls on the playground or just have the balls filled with air. Either would be fine. Some schools have a buddy bench, kids felt very positively about that and the recommendation is every school would have one. And our kiddos also indicated they'd really like to have water out at recess, so. And I am happy to take your questions, recognizing that this report has been quite lengthy. I'm happy to take some questions.
Susan, thanks. This is really thorough, a lot of good information. Could you describe the buddy bench?
A buddy bench is a dedicated space, a bench on the playground. And a student may sit on that bench at any time. And if they are feeling that they would like to connect with a game or some other people and aren't feeling that they can do that on their own, they find a spot on the buddy bench and another child knows they're someone who needs someone to play with. So it's kind of a come and sit by me or come and play with me kind of indicator. Okay? Very friendly. Kids spoke very positively about it.
So you, the surveys with the kids were across all six buildings?
The focus groups with the students were across all six buildings, students' grades three, four, and five. So about 40 to 45 students at each building.
And did you get, did you find that although, you know, some of the buildings obviously don't have the pilot in place, that the kids were looking for similar things from recess in terms of particularly, I'm thinking about, you know, relationships with the supervisors or more instructive play, trying to gauge, you know, what, what they were looking for?
Yes. So when we asked the question, what else could the recess supervisor do to make recess better, those are the kinds of responses we heard. I'd like the recess supervisor to know my name, or I would like to be able to know the supervisor's names. I'd like it if they would play with us or if they would come and help us when we're having a conflict. If they could maybe ref our games, that would be great. Those kinds of comments came back from our students.
Interesting. Because I would say, you know, just from having two kids go through elementary, there is a difference between an active, engaged supervisor on the playground versus the kid who, the supervisors on the playground is just there to say, please don't do that, please don't do that.
Yes.
Rather than engaging with the kids or knowing their names.
Yes.
You do hear that.
And kids recognize that and that's exactly what they're looking for.
They do.
So. So I thank you very much.
Actually, I had a couple more questions. We had talked.
I'm so sorry.
No, no. About instructional time increasing as part of one of the desired outcomes anyway. Can you talk to that or is there?
That was not part of the pilot, excuse me, the study in terms of how time would be structured around recess. That's a decision.
I think it actually had to do with the disruptions from free play recess that caused, I guess, arguments that spilled over into the classroom.
I see, yes. So the, that was not a question that we asked of students and it certainly did not bubble to the surface in any conversations we had with our principals. However, it was part of our research earlier in the year around the recess pilot. And the evaluation from teachers indicated that there was less disruption during those transition times at the two schools where we had the recess pilot in place. So, but it was not a question that we asked as part of this study at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, okay. I mean, is there a bottom line to this? I mean, obviously, the Playworks model that was used at the beginning of the year, and although I know that we've tweaked that to make it the Edina, in the Edina way of doing it, but I'm just wondering for, for the community, are we recommending that the pilots that we, that we had going on at Normandale and Concord will be replicated at the other four elementaries? Or will there be room for the buildings to tailor it to their building or whatever you're recommending?
I appreciate the question. The purpose of the study at the end of the year was to gather baseline data and student feedback that can inform the building, the building leadership and their building, building leadership team in terms of how they will create a next generation recess experience that is right for their site. And it's about, you know, recognizing where the strengths of the program are, where there's some areas for growth, and how to best provide that experience for their students. So a strict recommendation, a strong recommendation in one way or the other is not the result of this evaluation, but it is meant to inform principals as they move forward, and we will continue to collect data as we move forward.
And I did have a meeting today with the elementary principals just on a variety of topics, but recess was obviously one of them. They used, they took a look at the information shared and the recommendations. And then each site is really taking a look at what does this mean for our school culture? And each site has a different look, be it how they might want to staff it, be it the need for conflict resolution or be it the need for watering stations. So they're all taking pieces of it and reflecting it back to their school sites.
Thank you. Next is leadership update.
This is the end of the year, so there are a lot of reports. And I'm just going to introduce some players who will talk a little bit more about it. One of the reports is our Alt Comp report. And I believe Libby and Randy are here to give an update on that and I'm going to turn it over to them. And then we've got a variety of other, just again, end-of-year reports for the board to take a look to or take a listen to and respond to with questions. So I'll turn it over to Libby and Randy at this point. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Wallen Freeman, Superintendent Dresson, our school board and community members. Thank you for giving us some time to talk to you tonight about our Edina Teacher Evaluation and Alt Comp program. I'm joined here by Libby Sandvik, our teacher evaluation program facilitator, and Rhonda Geary are, one of our peer coaches that work with teachers on a regular basis. And the, the program that we have in place in Edina Public Schools has really been a significant factor in continuing to improve teacher quality in our school district. We are, we have great opportunity to provide feedback on a regular basis with teachers and provides a great growth opportunity for them as they partner with their peer coaches to reflect upon their instruction and to think about new ways that they want to try to make instruction better as they move forward. This really represents a very successful partnership between our, our teacher bargaining unit, EME, and our school district. And we're excited to both share some results, tell a few stories, and then talk about where this is headed next. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Libby.
Thank you. So this is the second year of teacher evaluation, our eighth year in QComp. By statute, we are to present you with an annual QComp report. Since our QComp program and teacher evaluation are kind of merged into one, it's an update on both programs. So this year, in year two, with the teacher eval implementation, we did have some changes and then some continuation of things from last year. So at this time last year, I came to you requesting a suspension of the exceeds expectation rating. We found that to be very successful this year. Teachers were willing to try new teaching, go and take risks in the classroom because they were comfortable receiving a meets expectations, not trying to put on a dog and pony show to try to achieve an exceeds expectations rating. Our probationary teachers worked on a subset of descriptors rather than all 19 descriptors. That subset was dictated by their year of probation. Our coaches and administrators continued to meet in quarterly training sessions. Our coaches continued to meet weekly on Monday mornings to go through program implementation elements and also some training. And our teacher evaluation committee continued to meet monthly to discuss program implementation. Our coaches had over 5,400 meetings this year with our non-probationary staff. So there is quite a lot of meeting going on and discussion around quality teaching in Edina. Just a reminder of program expectations, all teachers at minimum have three observations. Our non-probationary teachers are on a three-year cycle and our probationary staff are observed by their principals during the year. All teachers do write student learning goals and are engaged in the work around the school improvement plan. We have incentives associated with each of the elements of our QComp program. Our professional growth plan is based upon successfully meeting expectations in five descriptors during the year. Our student learning goal incentive is based upon the successful implementation of a goal that is crafted by teacher and approved by either principal or coach. And the site goals are awarded based upon student achievement on a standardized. And the site goals are awarded based upon student achievement on a standardized assessment. We're still using TalentEd as our management system for, it's used by teachers, coaches, and administrators. It's a system that we use to complete forms, monitor progress. We can have electronic signatures. It archives documents. We have the ability to do some one-click reporting, one-click analytics, and that's very useful to analyze our data. But the best part is that we have local control, and I'll be spending time this summer revising all of TalentEd because of the changes that we've made to the program, and we are able to do that in-house. Here's an example of the way a coach or a principal could use TalentEd to gauge progress of their staff. And they would do that for a variety of processes. They could see where their staff are at any point in the process. We can also look at the one-click analytics to see what percentage of our teachers who have completed a form have answered it in a particular way. So this is just a student learning goal progress check as an example. We did do a spring survey in part because I needed some data for the annual report, and it provided some feedback to coaches from their staff. You know, I think that our program continues to evolve. Teachers continue to find value in it, and that was evidenced in some of these survey comments, such as, as I become more familiar with the process and descriptors over the years, it's affirmed my practices and helped me to grow. I value the time and discussions as well as the guidance of my coach. Thank you for pushing me beyond my comfort level in a kind and safe way. And then this is an incredibly well-organized and well-run evaluation program, and that, I think, is a testament to the work that our coaches are doing with their teachers and the fidelity with which this program is implemented across the district. The, two of the questions that I needed for the annual report had teachers answering the following. My participation in the teacher evaluation program has helped me grow as a teacher this year. Eighty-six percent of teachers strongly agreed or agreed with that statement, and eighty-eight percent of teachers strongly agreed or agreed with the statement that my participation in teacher evaluation has had a positive effect on student achievement this year. And Rhonda, one of the peer coaches, is here to speak to some of the experiences she's had with teachers. Rhonda coaches teachers from early childhood all the way through the high school and our TOSSA staff.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to share several different things that came to mind. There's many of them, but I tried to pick just a different assortment. One that I thought would be interesting for you to hear about is a teacher that I work with who is, works with the pre-K students, and she had a student learning goal that she wanted to work on S blends with her students, and that, because these were, these are young kiddos, decided that if she could get them to use those correctly fifty percent, and with fifty percent accuracy, she'd be happy by the end of the year. So because it was a student learning goal and because we were checking in and I was talking with her, and it was something that she was always gathering data about, she ended up, her goal was to insert it in various times during the day, whenever she could with the kiddos. And the result was that a hun, by the end of the year, a hundred percent of them could do it with fifty percent accuracy, so that was great. And she far exceeded the goal because ninety-three, ninety-three percent of them could do it with ninety percent accuracy. So what she really found was, and this is what we spent a lot of time talking about at the end of the year, is that because she was so intentional with it and because she was thinking about all the different ways that she could slip it in during the day just naturally in what they were doing, like snack time, or walking to the bus, or walking down the hall, or putting on their boots, or whatever, they were working on it constantly. And she said, it really showed me that when I do this with intentionality, and so often that I see these huge gains. And so at the end of the year, she was already talking about, okay, so next year on my student learning goal, this is what I want to do, this is how I'm going to add to this. And she basically wrote it out, and we're ready to go for the fall. So that was one example. Another one was a teacher that I worked with who teaches fax class, and she has so many kids come up to her, we were talking about this in the pre-observation meeting, that so many kids come up to her and they say, is this good? And they show her, and they want her verbal, yes, you're right, continue, you're good. And so one of the descriptors is to help students develop self-assessment skills. So we talked in the pre-observation, what, what do you already have in place and what can you really implement to help students be, to be able to assess it themselves? And so she always has a visual of what something should look like at different stages. She has different things for them to watch for. And additionally, she, she will say, you know, they have the recipe that they can always look back at. So we talked about, let, put those things into place, and instead of saying, yes, that looks great, you can continue, she would, she decided she was going to ask these questions or say, you know, have you, have you checked your recipe? Or did you check the visual? Does yours match that? And so she ended up doing this, and then in the, in the observation, it was apparent that she was doing that. And so we talked about it in the post, that she was going to continue doing this. And what was really neat is at the end of the year, when she did her peer observation in the post, that peer did not know that this was something that she was working on. She didn't know that this was something she and I had talked about. And in the post meeting where I was present, the peer said, I love how you have the students always reflect back and ask themselves the questions versus you telling them what, you know, if it's right or not. And so she said, you, I heard you asking over and over things about, you know, have you checked your recipe? So to me, that was proof that she'd really implemented and had a part of her teaching. And then one last one that comes to mind is a, somebody who's a veteran teacher, and after the lesson in the post, this person mentioned that, I wish you had been at my earlier hour because they were so much more, I think he said something like, so much more well-behaved. And so I asked the question, the group that I saw, were they engaged? What's the difference between being engaged and being compliant? And then we talked about it, and he said, you're right. Every, every question that they were asking, even if some of them were blurting it out, it was all on topic. And so then we talked about, was the other hour engaged? Were they compliant? And so he said at the end, because I usually ask the question, what do you, what's your takeaway from this experience? And at the end, he said, I loved how you made me think about compliance versus engagement because you're right. Even those, those kids were more restless, they were completely engaged and they were completely on topic, and they were excited about it, and that's why they were, they were asking the questions that they were.
Going into the 2016, 17 school year and beyond, we have a new MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, and it involves a revised rubric that has greater clarity. We had a large team of teachers and administrators that worked on that rubric, and the intent of it is to go a little deeper, increase the expectations a little bit more, and as we have more and more professional development, then that professional development gets incorporated into practice, and then the expectations continue to go up about what we see in the classroom, and specifically around how we use data and how data is analyzed around assessments, the implementation of culturally responsive and linguistically responsive strategies in the classroom. Those are some of the expectations areas that increase. We also then crosswalked those rubric items with the research on best instructional practices to make sure that what we're asking of our staff is in line with the research on best practices. We have these very fun meetings during the year at seven AM. Libby and I always love these. And we have our administrators and our peer coaches come together, and some of what we've done in the past is to look at videos and lessons of teachers teaching and then evaluate those lessons, and then we look at, how did everybody score that? How did you do it individually? How did you do it with your, compared to your tablemates? And then what does the data look like across the room? And the intent of that is to practice inner rate of reliability. Because if our rubric can produce inner rate of reliability, then we know our rubric is really being interpreted in a consistent way across the administrators and across the peer coaches.
That's great.
Sometimes we find that there are places where we need to make adjustments, and we've done that over time, but that's one of the ways that we get at doing some of the training so that we provide a consistently strong feedback program across the district. And we still have work to do there by, by all means, but it is a great opportunity to continue to grow and push the program. We continue to have this blend and this magic mix of coaching and evaluation, and part of the coaching is cognitive coaching, it's getting teachers, both classroom and non-classroom, to self-reflect. And then the final part of it is, at, at the end of the day, there is an evaluation. That evaluation is to determine where you at on these descriptors. Are you at proficient? Are you developing? Was there not enough evidence indicated yet? And then as Libby mentioned, we have a great software system, TalentEd, which is, really provides this rich database for building a growth mindset in our staff and gives us an opportunity to really pull out the evidence of whether or not these descriptors are being addressed and are being met. And so at this time, we would like to ask if you have any questions, and again, thank you for the time to share this report with you this evening.
I wanted to say that I loved hearing the stories. That was great. Can you tell me about a situation where you have a teacher, whether it's just, you know, an annual review, or it's a teacher who's working on tenure, where they're really having a difficult situation, and they're struggling to find tools to help them, and how you've been able to work with them to help them?
I would say the first thing that pops into my mind is just with all the push and the work that we've been doing with the culturally responsive, culturally and linguistically responsive strategies. And I can speak for myself, but I can also say this is what other coaches are doing too, that we, there's a teacher at the, the elementary level who developed some, they're basically note cards that have different strategies on them, and the coach who worked with her said, these are so great. They're, they're Shiroki Halli's work, but they're just in a handy format. And we said, can we use those and can we share them? So we all carry them around with us, and so when people are wondering about, you know, how can I do this, or if we see an area where that maybe could happen, then what we do is we pull those out and we say, take a look at some of these. Do some of these look like they might work? Oh, yeah, I could try this, or, you know, and then they might ask questions about, how does that work? Have you seen it happen? And so I would say that, because that's such a, a high learning curve for so many, I would say that that's the area that, that jumps out, and we just have the resources with us to share with them. So it's nice because we're all sharing it from one another.
And then my next question is just, overall, do you feel like the majority of our staff feels that this is a cooperative thing, not, I'm here to review you and tell you everything that you're doing wrong, but to help you grow in your profession?
Okay, I can take it. I would say that, especially now that we don't have the exceeds expectations, I think that has really helped people to feel like they're not supposed to prove something, that they're, they're really there to learn, that it's a growth model. And so people are willing to, as they were before, once they got more used to the program, ask questions and say, you know, what do you think about this? In fact, I had, now this is just popping into mind, I had some teachers this spring, a team who was trying something new, and they were very, very nervous about it, and because it, it was new content to them. And I won't go into a lot of detail because I want to just maintain confidentiality, but they were, they shared with me how nervous they were, and they did it, and a couple of them invited me in, and that was their observation. So that shows that they're willing to, you know, go out there and try something, and the reason they asked is because they said, if you're there, I've got another set of eyes in the room, and you can give me feedback about what happened. So, and, and a couple, at least one other one had their peer come in and observe it. So I think that's good, a good example of how that, that really does happen.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I think it's exciting to have observation in the classroom and to not have that pressure to say, I exceed the standard. I think going towards that cooperative, some more questions about what can we do to make it better, what's working for you, what's not, maybe those are out there, it's just not the questions we're seeing. The two that we see, helped me grow as a teacher and had a positive effect, the way they worded it, it's sort of saying eighty-six percent agree it's better than nothing, what we've got, which isn't really probing for where we can improve. So, you know, sort of, I guess sometimes the same thing when we're looking for feedback on these programs, that we don't expect it to exceed expectations all the time, but we're looking for constant feedback and improvement and growth as well. And I have another question, but I'm actually.
And just to address that this fall, we, in anticipation for crafting the new MOU that will cover 2016 through 2018, we did some focus groups at, with both teachers and principal-coach group to get some of that information. How can we, we have the opportunity now to make some larger-scale changes to the program. What do we need it to look like? And so, you know, at, we gave this survey, you know, the last two weeks of school only had a hundred and twenty respondents out of our six hundred and fifty-five teachers, which is actually in alignment with every other survey we've given in the spring. It's always right around a hundred and twenty people replying. And, you know, usually you get the respondents that really love it or really hate it.
Sure.
And, you know, one of the comments was, I think I put this on every survey. I'll put it here again, you know, and it was the same response that I can remember reading from the last few years, and, and their biggest gripe is something that just doesn't work statutorily with the QComp requirements. And, you know, so part of our programs are playing with that, too. What are the, what box are we in due to state requirements?
So I can't say I know what this would do to the data, but if you tied their financial payment to completion of the survey, you'd have more response.
Yes. And someone suggested that. The confidentiality piece there. Got to figure out how to do that.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Well, we do do with the seniors. They can't get their diploma without filling it out, and it is still anonymous, so.
Just, you know, a thumbs up that they've done it. Another question, actually, I went back to the story I really liked to do about the engagement versus compliance, but there's a third part, too, the, how do you know what they've learned? Because there's material you've covered, and there's material they've learned, and just, and maybe you do the same with emphasizing that, what, what formal and informal assessments, both formative and inform, summative, did you do during this lesson period, and how are you going to use that to inform tomorrow? Because a lot of teachers, and myself, I'm just a novice, but they, it's, it gets more into, did I get through the material today? Did they do the activities that I think will be helpful, as opposed to always probing to make sure that you're ready to move on?
I'm just curious to learn a little bit more about TalentEd. Is it cumulative over the years? In other words, here is the profile we're trying to develop over our staff over a set period of time, or is it sort of standalone year to year?
So year to year, the documents are archived, and teachers have access to, in the fall, they'll have access to their past two years' worth of rubrics, pre-observation forms, goals, everything that has been submitted in there. One piece that I'm working with TalentEd on is how to seamlessly transfer data from one year, if I was a year-one teacher this year, next year I'll be a year-two teacher, how does the data from that rubric this year populate next year's rubric? We tried something new this year and decided it might not be the best approach. So I'm working with TalentEd next year to do a data export and then a data import so that it can be, for non-probationary teachers, a multi-year, really a three-year rubric with that information so that we can, as coaches, talk to them about it, the rubric from a growth standpoint, and look at the cumulative data that's there. Yeah. But I'm still, you know, there's things with TalentEd that I know it should be able to do, but I can't figure out how to make it do that, so that's where I'm working with TalentEd to say, help me do this, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just like to publicly thank Libby and Rhonda for all their work on this program and coaching every day. Quality of our teachers in the classroom is the biggest school factor that affects the education of our students, and they contribute to that daily, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
I'd ask Val Burke to join me as we give an update on our early education recommendations for our three-to-five-year-old program. Again, we've been studying our early ed program, both through our birth-through-grade-five as well as our community education survey. We've also done some work around special education to do some more study, but again, always taking a look at best practices and making sure we continue to have this quality program. As we looked at doing our assessment, we started to assess what some of the needs were, and so we were responding to these needs. This was data that was collected throughout the last couple of years, most specifically in January, when we did a data dive with both our staff and our parent population. The overall recommendation focused, again, on building successes in our current programming, both the Early Childhood Family Ed as well as the Early Childhood Special Ed, the School Readiness, the pre-K, making sure we had this continuum of support, so it's a birth-through- So, it's a birth-through-grade-five, so we needed to keep that connection with our elementary schools, this continuum of learning, so we're meeting the growing demands of our students and, and their parents. And so, it's to really get them school-ready and also have our schools ready for our future kindergarteners, and then expand our operations, our efforts around quality programming. We did a lot of our work with our birth-through-33-month study, and I'll ask Val just to touch base on this, but this was recommendations that the board approved in February, and we're already starting to move on.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
Good evening, school board members. With our birth-through-33 program, we, in those recommendations, talked about follow-up with our legislators and with the Department of Human Services, which we have done and are having ongoing conversations, looking for opportunities to be able to continue to deliver our two-year-old program in a variety of ways, some with a day in the building and a day out of the building. And we look forward to hearing back from the department with the overall goal of not being a licensed Department of Human Services facility for that. We've been working with our other providers in the community, and we have a meeting scheduled for June 24th, where all the other preschool and early education providers will meet with myself and Lisa Hawthorne from Early Childhood Special Education to talk about what are the needs and gap areas? Because what we heard loud and clear from the conversations was, there were gap areas in, in sort of part-time infant and early ed care. So, those conversations are happening, and some of those providers have actually been part of our conversations when we even invited the community and parents in. So, they've been very productive.
So, moving on those recommendations, the three-to-five-year-old program then really took a look at, again, where we can go next with our personalized learning experiences, really taking a look at how we assess progress and some of the tools that we need to use, both in the early childhood area but also in the early childhood special area, and how we can use that assessment tool to help even our kindergartners that use that information and move that even into our primary years, to help them be more successful in measuring the student's readiness for school, for their next step in their educational experience. Also, there's tools within that assessment that help families in determining the success rate. We are continuing to look at the latest research and looking at different conferences, different programs that are out there that are highly recognized. And then, again, taking a look at how we can enrich the family experience. As our families become, have greater needs and more diverse needs, how do we respond to that? Maybe it isn't just that one-size-fits-all, not only for our students but for our parent population. And then, also taking a look at the partnership piece that we can shape between early childhood family education and early childhood special education, which really are two different contracts, and that's a challenge not here in EDINA, not here in just the state, but throughout the United States of how you blend the staffing to maximize those resources while still respecting the differences that need to occur in the work agreement. But those are the major areas of focus. And I know, Val, if you want to add things to that, the board does have the specifics tied out in a recommendation which identifies all the specific actions that we're going to be taking over the next couple of years to implement these three-to-five-year-old strategies. But Val, just some summary comments around that?
One thing that I was really impressed with, with both meetings in January, and then we had two parent-community meetings just last week, is the engagement of the participants and just the tenor of the group, who were, who were really very excited and engaged in how we're going to be moving this forward, wanted to be a part of that input session, loved the fact that we were going to be aligning with the birth-through-grade-five so that the information that, again, we gather through our assessments in early ed would line up and be informational for our kindergarten teachers so that kids would come in sort of with their own little portfolio. And lots of, lots of engaged questions, but the cooperation and collaboration with that group was, was really, really great to see.
And the timing of this is important because we do want to start moving on even looking at how we can tie the two programs together more tightly, even at a staffing level. And so, we are asking for action tonight on this. It does align well in the birth-through-five with the community ed survey, our community ed strategic plan, as well as the zero-to-33. So, it's a nice continuity piece, and we're very excited how this is going to roll over the next two years. I think Val and Jeff Jorgensen, Lisa Hawthorne, a variety of people have been very instrumental in helping move this initiative forward, and we commend them for this work. But we'll take questions if there are any.
I just wanted to tell you that I've heard some great feedback from the, the pre-K families, that they've been feeling a great collaboration. I know we had a little hiccup in the fall with some needs to have to change some of our programming, but I've heard great feedback that, that, you know, they've been working with you, in particular, Val, and through the PTO. So, I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Also, can you give me some thoughts or examples around, you know, for those of us who are familiar with the current programming and the classes, and then, of course, the parenting classes? How, what types of things do you see that we need to adapt to help us better serve our, our changing community? Particularly, say, give me an example in parenting and in the early, or the kid side?
So, some things that we are doing right now, we'll build on, we've had our targeted services coordinator, Mary Stryer, working with our liaisons, our cultural liaisons. And so, they have met, we, we facilitated a meeting together so that the Spanish and Somali liaison could help us reach families that we hadn't particularly reached. And they've had also ongoing conversations about, we had in the past, but bringing programming to different areas of the community. Gotten some great feedback and ideas on even like a literacy bus going to different places to engage. We had a really wonderful participant in our small group who talked to us really about, you know, there, and this isn't necessarily new information, but it's something new learning that we really need to do, is that many communities need face-to-face contact, you know, contact as opposed to just that written, like, "Would you come?" And so, that invitation, that sitting down looking, I think will become part of our portfolio of opportunities for families.
And I think on the student programming side, looking at bringing English language learner programs to our preschool, so that there's a readiness, you know, and the younger we can capture that attention and that interest, the more quickly they can master that second language. And so, helping them grow that, and so, we're looking at some program options around that would be another example. I think, again, our facilities, as those evolve, we're going to, those are going to create a lot of opportunities for us as well, and we have that one early childhood center approach.
Okay. And then, I just had one other question as I was reading through the, the actual document that's attached in the action portion. Tell me about streamlining access to registration. Are we still, I mean, I remember the old days of sitting out in the cold all night waiting to register, and we've come a long way since then. So, what types of things do we still need to improve to make it a better experience for our families?
We want to make it less siloed for our early childhood special education and early, early family ed programs. So, we're creating sort of a one-stop shop. I know that's a cliche, but really integrating our operations staff so that families can come in and get every single question answered from, from one spot. So, that's really one of the ways we're talking about streamlining.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question about goal three. One of the, I see upcoming, I'm losing my spot here. The upcoming lines for 2017, 2018 was all-day pre-K as a pilot. And I'm just curious to know what some of the goal outcomes are, if you're seeing that, you know, we're still having trouble getting students kindergarten-ready, or if we're trying to consider moving kindergarten material down in age group? Or what, what other outcomes are the goals there?
So, when we started doing our research, actually throughout the last couple of years, best practices will tell us for some students who in our school readiness programs, which has very defined ways of identifying students for school readiness, that more time in the pre-K classroom is very appropriate for them in order to be school-ready or to help us get ready for, them be ready for school. Also, we have a parent demand out there that we have noticed during the last two years where two working family, two parent-working families are asking us to deliver a program that is more comprehensive and all-day.
Can you say more about the selection criteria? So, this wouldn't be something at this point that parents would just be able to opt into, but they would actually have to, during a screening process, have somebody agree that your child is one of the certain percentage that meets the criteria for this? Is that right?
It's a both-and. Because we are a, a fee-based program, it's a both-and. We have our target, yeah.
I guess what I mean is it's not as easy to just say, "I want it, so here's the check." You'd have to be screened into it. You'd have, because you were saying some students.
Some student, the students that are school-ready, our school readiness students, which is a defined legislative program and has a set of criteria in terms of what, what that, you know, it has to do with poverty, it has to do with access. That, those students would be invited in or encouraged into the process. We can't really make anybody, but those would be invited students. Am I answering?
I think so. And just, I don't want to repeat it, but just, so it's, if it's targeted for students who aren't currently getting school-ready with the services provided, then it's not something that's open to the whole community. It's not something where parents can just opt in if they're willing to write the check. So, it's not both-and in that sense. It's not open to all pre-K.
It would be open to all pre-K.
All pre-K. Okay. So, then it's not really?
Well, we, what we do now currently is we have, we reserve spaces for a variety of students. So, all of our programs are mixed. We reserve spaces for a percentage from early childhood special ed. We have, we reserve spaces for some of our school-ready students, and then we have open access so that it's a blended classroom. It's not, you know, there's no one classroom that's just all targeted students.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, it does. It just starts at that point to replicate other preschools in the area. And so, I guess some of the demand from parents must be for something that they see is more affordable or access. Is that what you're hearing?
I think there's no other place that provides the, and Jeff Jorgensen could say it better than I, just the cloud of services, including speech services, OT, PT, that a school district, a public education system can provide right on-site. So, it's really, there are families that love that comprehensiveness.
Sure.
And on the flip side of that, I would say that we're the only preschool program that offers the parenting component.
Yes.
And paired together is, is, in my personal opinion, the best preschool program that there is, to have those two components combined. But we also have just the pre-K and all those combined services.
But we are one of many providers, and, and really, it's really parental choice. But we want to have a, a variety of options, a part-time, a full-time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Val.
I'm going to call in Margot Bach to give a overview of the preliminary budget. This, again, is another action item that is taking place later in the evening, but we just thought we'd wrap all of our reports together at one time.
Good evening, Dr. Dressen and Mr. Chair and School Board. It's that time for the preliminary budget, and we have, this is kind of a culmination of the last six months of work, so I want to thank you as a school board, the finance committee, certainly our budget advisory task force that met in February weekly for about three or four weeks and did awesome work and participation with us. And certainly, the business office staff, it wouldn't come together with, without them. And Pauline Fofana, our controller, is here tonight to celebrate the success that is done, as well as I. And also, certainly, the site staff. It takes everybody, whether you supervise or monitor $100 budget or the overall budget as you do as a school board. So, I appreciate that. I'll try to go through here relatively quickly, but just the major assumptions. We did discuss this at the last finance committee meeting. We, the legislature did increase the, our revenue by 2% for the 1617 year, still projecting pretty stable kindergarten enrollment and overall average daily membership. Expenditures do include the board-approved budget plan from April, and in addition to that, the enhancements that the board approved in May, and a variety of other, other things that we've already gone over throughout this budget process. So, I reiterate all those. A couple of key points before I get into the charts and graphs that have changed since the last time we had a conversation. One is more significant information in relationship to the new special education formula. So, we have incorporated those changes in the, not only in the revenue, but also on the expenditure side of things. We have spent some time, Jeff Jorgensen and myself, and the business office teams and the special ed teams, working together on coding, and also brought in the retired special ed guru from MDE, recently retired, to help guide us in how this new formula is going to work. 1516 is key for this formula. It sets the stage for the future of the formulas. In the long run, I think it's, it's a good change, but we need to be very diligent and mindful of the impact and not just do everything the way we have always done it. We want to make sure we're doing it to maximize our revenues in terms of both state and federal for special education services. It's not a year you want to miss reporting something or something like that. So, you will note as, if you're looking in the details, which we won't go through tonight, you will see an increase in state aid, and it looks like federal aid has gone down. That's just kind of the combination of how we're going to make both of these work. And again, you might see in some detailed expenditure areas where it looks like some of the state special ed is higher, but correspondingly, federal expense is a little bit lower. So, note, note that change, and where it, I'm being very cautious in terms of the projections. It will be key to get through 1516 audit and reconciling of our special ed data, and I'll update you more in the fall in that regard, because we'll have one year of history then with this new formula and update projections accordingly. So, a lot of unknown yet, but we know more than we did six months ago and a year ago on this whole new formula. So, and feel like we had great resources helping us with these projections, both retired and current MDE staff. So, the other key change is in the change July 1 of this coming year in the long-term facilities maintenance project funding, formally termed alternative facilities. The new coding requirements for this, alternative facilities, has always been coded under construction or Fund VI. The new coding requirements for this effective July 1 are that any projects under $2 million are required to be reported in the general fund along with the revenue. And then, any projects over $2 million are to be under construction. I'm not sure of the exact philosophy, but my understanding is that anything under $2 million is not substantially improving the value of the overall building and is typically funded on a pay-as-you-go basis through the annual levy process versus issuing bonds. And I think that's, the state and the committees that recommended this kind of came up with that benchmark. So, what you will see in the documents when you compare, for example, 1516 to 1617, you will notice that on the revenue and the expense side in the general fund, and it's a little harder to see in construction because we got the bond tying in there, but specifically the general fund, you'll see revenue has increased and so has expenditures because of that coding change. Just note that if that coding change had not taken place and it was all still an instruction, that revenue would have increased 2.1% and expenditures 0.9%. So, that gives you a little bit of a framework of when you're comparing in the individual statements what that looks like. All in all, the report is a good report. We are close to projections, and we did perform better just a little bit, not a lot, but just a little bit in terms of the enrollment projections. And then, also, this special ed funding change did provide an increase in revenue from projections when I provided the long-range plan to you in January. Again, I'm trying to be very cautious on that, the additional revenue associated with the new special ed formula. At the same time, I do want to acknowledge, I do think there is going to be an increase in revenue in that area, and, and so, there, that has had a positive impact. The remainder of, so that's the primary assumptions and changes. The actual budget document itself that is included in your board materials includes an executive summary in nice narrative format with some graphs and charts to just give you an overview of what has occurred and what has changed from the previous year organizational section. Then, the financial section has more detail in terms of the impact on the fund balances, and then also five years were, or four years of previous history plus the 1617 year and the various funds, so you can see some trends, things that might, might be happening. And then, informational section provides much more detail. From the fund balance perspective, we really focus on page- balance perspective, we really focus on page fourteen, pages fourteen and fifteen. Again, very close to projections, slightly above it because of the increase in projected special ed aid. So on the charts, you can even see the change in both the coding change and how that impacts an increase in revenue. So you see in the general fund on the revenue side, an increase for sixteen, seventeen. Correspondingly, you also see on the building side, if, if we hadn't received the bond dollars, you would probably see the revenues go down, but we have bond dollars coming in and long-term facility maintenance bond funds that'll come in in this coming year. So, you see both revenues go up in this case. And again, the general fund expenditures are going, going up because of the recoding for the long-term facility maintenance. And you see, as we are spending down our construction funds, you can see that that's going to throw the building fund chart off quite a bit. General fund revenue history and our expenditure history. Where do we receive our dollars? The majority, almost 70% comes from the state in the general fund. Our expenditures, we are a service industry, and we do spend over 80% of our budget on either direct student support or instructional support-type services and staff to provide those services to students. I will let you know, if you didn't notice already, that there's two slides in a row that look exactly the same. I noticed that just before the board meeting. So the second one, and I've given it, Sarah will update your materials for you. The second one is actually to be more specific and include, separate the salaries into licensed staff, administration, support staff, that kind of thing. So, again, we are, the majority of our service is direct instruction to students, so in the licensed instructor area and QCOM, which you just heard about, that's about 74% of the budget, with the remaining being in types, support staff, administration, and other types of positions. And then our expenditures by program, again, over 70% of our program area is either direct instruction or support services to students. And as part of the budget process, I always have to update the fund balance chart. I will qualify this in that it is up-to-date reflecting the sixteen, seventeen preliminary budget here I'm presenting to you tonight. I have not updated any assumptions from January for seventeen, eighteen, but it does course, any impact in sixteen, seventeen does either positively or negatively impact going forward. We'll continue and need to monitor moving into the fall, how the audit results come in, monitor the special ed funding situation, fall enrollment, new hire staff, that kind of thing, when we update the final budget in the fall. And then also the next-gen planning and programming and implementation, getting more data on that to update the long-range plan in a multi-year, not just seventeen, eighteen, but eighteen, nineteen, and beyond too. But the good news is, between the work of, of the budget advisory task force, their recommendations, you as a board, finance committee, we did make adjustments in the budget, and you can see that that has had a positive impact on the trajectory, in addition to the special ed revenue coming in a little bit better. So with that, I would answer any questions that you have.
For, just looking ahead, Margot, for the seventeen, eighteen school year for special ed, do we expect it to hold constant, or do we expect to see a continued growth?
I would, I would not expect it to grow as in this year in the transition. There is an inflationary factor in that new, the, the new formula, so there'd be some small growth, but I would guess it wouldn't, you know, it might be 1% or 2% or something like that.
So we've captured the benefits there?
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you and your team for all their work, and, and to the community for helping us figure out, you know, how to tighten our budget and make it work. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you take out the change that the legislature did on the construction, how that's impacted, where are we at in the budget in terms of expenditures higher than revenue?
So, if we take a look at that, we are just under a million dollars higher, and that is because we were intentionally spending down some fund balance. If you recall, we came in better as of June 30, 2015. Part of our budget plan was to use a little bit of the fund balance as, as we met in January and worked with the budget advisory task force. So, and some of that, when I say that, also would be in the, that's not just only the unassigned general fund balance, when I refer to that, just under a million dollars. That is some of the reserved account balances. So, for example, if capital, if we're spending down, so it's a combination of all the areas of the general fund that comes up with that dollar amount.
Thank you. Any other questions? I guess you're done. Thank you, Margot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is action on the budget later in the evening on the construction side. Again, we're working on this blend of making sure we hit the scope that we'd committed to with a schedule that we can live with, and staying within the funds we have available. We continue to work hard on that. This is a slide we've seen before, but we are busy with the high school off and running. Our Countryside and Concord additions, these are bids that we're going to be sending out, and we're asking the board to move on approving that tonight. We're, again, looking at the construction of the transportation building. Lots happening. Then in the spring of 2017, we'll begin the Cornelia construction, looking at, again, all the other sites that you can just graze down. We know that the summer of 2017 is going to be a very active time in the school district, and we recognize that as we move forward, this will continue to evolve, and we'll be completing all of our work in the summer of 2018. This is a variety of, not only the construction project, but a lot of our alt facility projects, again, which is helping with the maintenance of our facilities. At the high school, we're moving forward on additions. The new commons areas have begun work, and we're very active on that. The field work, the high school is closed for the summer, and they moved their offices and all the necessary programming over to Valley View. It's been a smooth, a smooth shift of Valley View. We are looking at a major roof repair. This is coming out of deferred maintenance. This is something we've been monitoring, and the, the winter was not good to our Valley View roof, and so we are looking at a major repair on that. But again, that's out of a different fund, but it's still a major construction project for us. East campus, working on our turf fields, as well as doing some parking lot resurfacing and roof repair at the, here at the community center. And then we're continuing to move forward with our transportation facilities, both on the new land that we now own with the plans on that, as well as taking a look at the sale of the current property. Elementary, we're growing our security plans. We met with the elementary principals today. As a district, we had tabletop experiences at, at administrative level, by, with the help of the Dino Police Department, and went through a variety of security situations and see how administrators would respond. So we'd be at that best practice. We're also taking a look at the elementary schools, doing an upgrade on their facility, on their security at the entrance level. So we're doing a single, controlled, single entrance, even though we aren't able to make the improvement that we had hoped for this summer with some of our school sites, and creating, creating a greater control. So there's going to be a single entrance that is used that'll direct all of the visitors and guests right to the office once the school day starts. We're also taking a look at piloting a buzzer system at Countryside. Again, we're just continuing to make improvements, make sure all visitors are checking in at all of our school sites, and then doing some more controlled work at our entrance, especially during the school day. We continue to assess that, and so then in October, November, we'll get an update of how successful those improvements have been, and then we'll continue to work with that. We want to do this in partnership with our community, so we'll be getting input from staff, as well as parents, on success of this, as we continue to grow it until we can get some of our security plans formally in place through the construction process. Again, we mentioned the rebidding at Concord and Countryside. I will call on Susan and Vaughn to kind of help me walk my way through some of this work at the elementary, taking a look at some of the changes that are being proposed. So Vaughn, maybe you want to pop in here, and Susan?
I've got it.
You got it? Okay, Vaughn. Vaughn Dirks from Old Architect, a regular visitor here?
Regular visitor. So, this is actually very exciting in the context of many of the things that Susan talked about earlier, and how we look at facilities and reevaluating what the design work was. A lot of what we saw earlier in the evening talked about how students were using spaces, ways that are not traditional to typical classrooms, and that's most of what the referendum talked about in terms of how you were looking at your next-generation spaces. So as we went back and took a look at all the plans we did for the elementaries, what we were really trying to do was master plan the entire building as we think about it, not just create some space, but think about how the buildings were used in general. As we looked at where we may be beyond that scope, we looked at what was not in the referendum specifically, and we found that we were making major alterations to both art and music spaces in the building, when that wasn't something that we had talked about. And so we started with the context of, how do we look at each of the buildings and take those two components out, and leave the spaces where they are in those buildings, and how does that impact the plans? And what we found was, it's still aligned with the goals of the planning groups, the mission of what the district's next-generation plan was, and we found very minimal impact in terms of how the buildings laid out, and were able to achieve the same type of work. So, our referendoscope includes those security improvements, the extended learning environments, improvements to all the special education spaces, really reinventing media centers district-wide, and equity between specialist spaces. So, quickly run through what changed in the plans. We've had a chance to meet with each of the core planning teams to make sure it's still aligned with their vision, and we're quite happy with the results of those meetings, and I think they were happy to see that the plans they came up with remained intact. This is our original design for Concord Elementary. And I'll point out, most of the work we're talking about is in the lower level, where we had moved some of our special education spaces around, have moved art to a new location in the building to try and get a few more windows into the space. What we ended up with was, all of our cluster arrangements for the classroom spaces remained as they were, but our art room remained in the existing location. Our GT room remained in that existing location. We're still making special education improvements to the center part to the building, but we were able to make minimal changes to how this building laid out. So we're still achieving that five-classroom cluster organization within the building itself. I know I'm kind of going through this fairly quickly, but I'll answer questions as we get towards the end. Countryside, I think, was best described as, currently in this location is the office for the building, and we were going to move the office towards the front door. Art is in the upper level for the building, adjacent to music, and we were going to relocate music to this area. In the design process, they wanted to know, could we put the two music rooms adjacent to each other and locate art in this location? Unfortunately, that required us to renovate three spaces instead of one. And so, in our final design, we went back to the original plan of a band room in this location, and art and music adjacent to each other. In talking through the programming aspects, they said, you know what, that's something that we can work with. We've got the music space that we need. We have the art storage space we need. The rest of the building, all the classroom design, the office location, remained exactly as the planning groups had worked through. Highlands apparently was blank initially. I'm not sure what happened to the picture here. Well, I will, I'll just move forward. We had looked at locating kindergarten in the L around this corner, which did displace the art room. In going back and looking through the building, we said, what if we leave art in this corner and create our four kindergarten rooms adjacent from each other, where we had had classroom space before? Reorganized some of our classroom organization, moved our GT classroom towards the end. Media center space, all of our CP space for the building remained as originally designed, and working with the groups, again, they found this was something that they really could identify with, and felt that it met the needs of the plan.
So, oh, I can read.
Yes.
Just on, on both the plans, the new layout of the classrooms are in our work with what they, what we want to do in terms of personalized learning and access to those flexible spaces for all grade levels.
Absolutely. And you'll find that the quantity of those extended learning environments, the location of them, the dispersment through the building remained as designed, so that it gave you the flexibility in the future. If you remember, originally, we had labeled each of these classrooms with grade organizations, so first grade, second grade, and we took that off to show the flexibility. But as the core planning team sought through, through it, they were still thinking, what does that look like first year, and will it work for the future? And so we still have all of those same intentions with the plan and that flexibility built into it. For Highlands, one of the things that was very important to them was that the classrooms could operate in pairs, and so we still have the pair organization to that. At Cornelia, similar floor plan layout to the building. This one, we had a few major changes. We had looked at putting additions on both ends of the building, as well as an addition out to the side of the building here, which caused a little bit of inefficiency in how we looked at things. We'd also moved some of our art and music rooms around in this location. The revised plan leaves art and music where they were, and shifts our additions from the end of the building into one common addition off the side of the building, so we gained some construction efficiency. We also found that we were able to create some larger extended learning environments in that organization, reorganized a little bit of how we were working with classrooms on this side of the building to leave more of our classrooms intact, and reduce the amount of renovation space we had in the building. But overall, our, our plan, organization remained the same. This one required a couple of meetings with the core planning team. It was probably the most extensive in terms of rework, but in the end, they felt that this plan actually achieved more of their goals than where we had started with the bid documents. So I think that was a victory as well. Creek Valley had the least amount of change in terms of what we were doing. We had simply looked at moving art and music from this location in the building to move the two music rooms adjacent to each other, and going back, music remained in this configuration with art to the side. Very few changes in terms of the overall function to this plan. Normandale, again, for whatever reason, the picture's not showing up, but it involved how we relocated art and music. Instead of our, moving music adjacent to each other, we're going to look at some more sound attenuation for the music space in this location to make it functionally work for the building a little bit better, and the remainder of the plan remained intact as it went through. And so, the goal here was really to try and work with that criteria we established with the planning groups, think about what their overall goals were, and think about how to maintain the flexibility for the future of the buildings. And in each one of these cases, I think we found that that was achievable. Bringing the core planning teams back together as a whole, so all six core planning teams met with us for the first meeting, helped them to see the commonality between their plans, and, and see that there's a, a level of standard across the district, so that each of the buildings are achieving similar goals, I think was also helpful in terms of the redesign. And so it was, it was a valuable process to go back through. Any other questions?
So every building, in terms of their CPT, left feeling good with the new changes, and understanding why we made the changes, and it sounds like even in some cases, they were maybe better than before.
Absolutely. I think the Cornelia plan required us to meet with them a couple of times outside of that group, but for the most part, our, of our six teams, the five other groups, after our initial meeting with all of them together, and they saw the changes, they said, that's what we're going to do? Fantastic, that looks great. So, I think that the change impacted them, once they saw that their criteria actually helped guide the plans, was a valuable process, and they understood why we did it, so that you could go back in and redesign and still adhere to those rules that they set up for us.
Okay. And Cornelia is happy?
Cornelia's happy.
And likewise, everything we said the referendum would bring about is still in the plan.
Absolutely.
Intact.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Yeah, thanks for all your work. And Susan, I know, going back and redoing all this, so thank you.
Just a few updates on summer happenings. The new reading series is underway as far as being implemented. We've had training with our administrative staff and gearing up for our teaching staff. This is a phased-in process, because it's really a new approach to reading, a best-practice approach, and much more inclusive, and going to, again, get in performance of our students, and we're excited about the training available. This will be a major priority for our teaching staff throughout the next couple of years, as they gain their expertise in the delivery of this instructional model. Again, advancing some of that leadership model, we're going to be hiring two teachers in special assignment to support some of the work that we're wanting to do at our elementary level, secondary level, working hard on their master schedules. We'll have some more discussion with that. This summer with the boards, we continue to grow that, and also starting to plan out how they're going to grow their courses and curriculum alignment for the fall of 2017, and some discussions occurring actually between the two core teams, both at the middle school and the high school, coming together so that they have good alignment as they do their planning. At the district level, we're going to be going out surveying our community soon around start and end time plans. I mentioned the security training... soon, around start and end time plans. I mentioned the security training that we recently went through with the police department, doing some more survey data reviews. We did a lot of survey data in the spring, and so, thanks to the research and evaluation department for their data gathering, that'll all be part of the school improvement process. So we put all that information back into play, as we continue to look at goals of how we can get better, not only on the academic side, but also on that partnership side. And then tomorrow's a big day in the district, it's our day-to-day, where we're bringing in all our leadership teams from the various schools to start identifying the key goals, based on the data findings that we have thus far, and how we can make sure we're getting the best out of our school sites, in the area of how they can set goals that will really help get our students to perform at that next level. Leadership training is a constant. We have a lot of exciting things going on. Last week, we had a couple of days of leadership training for administrators, but throughout the summer months, including the Edina Learning Institute in August, lots going on as far as training. And that would be a quick summary of things happening in the district as we close out the 2015-16 school year. Take any questions at this time?
Can you just share a little bit about the, the new secured entrances? You said that although we won't be, you know, actually making the-
We have a more controlled entrance?
Yeah, explain what that's going to look like.
What we know is that at Southview, a very successful tool has simply been a roping process, a directing students or visitors from that main door to the main office, so that they can't pass without obviously seeing that. We're going to monitor if that's a successful approach or not. If it isn't, then we'll go to another approach. We are going to try a buzzer system, where it's an outdoor buzz, that you have to buzz to get your, to be allowed into the building, and we're going to pilot that to see if that's successful. We're going to listen very carefully to how this is, as far as on the security side, but also on the partnership side with families and visitors, is this working? So, each site is assessing that. They've come up with a process for doing that. Again, we're also looking at just that number of doors opened prior to the start of the school day, and trying to restrict that and make that sensible as well, because just all of our schools are designed at a very different time, so there are more doorways than we really want in places, and given how the buildings flow, we want to make sure that works as well. So, the elementary principals have been working on that. Again, today was one of the meetings that we did a lot of work on that. Secondary principals done a lot of work last year, and they're pretty much staying with those practices as they go forward. I will also go on to say, at the security level, we're working with our construction management firm, so we're building an additional security plan as our contractors are around, to make sure we have a strong, not only safety situation, but a secure situation once the school year starts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next is board committee appointments. For some reason, you're listed as the presenter.
Well, I don't think there's any, this is again, the board takes a look at the six-month point of, do we want to change our committee assignments, or any of the liaison's positions? And at this point, the administration is not recommending any changes for that July through December. I think the committee process is working, but if you do have feedback prior to July, I would encourage you to contact the board chair, who will then make those suggestions, and then the board will formally vote on this at the July board meeting.
So typically, we do change liaisons, or at least consider it June 30th. And I know that there's been one request from Sarah to pick up Highlands, and so, that would require the Highlands rep to change. But let me know what everybody's preferences.
And I thought it'd be a good time to maybe roll off Cornelia, since I've been on that for four and a half years.
Okay. Just send me your comments and questions and desires. All right. Next is policy review. Regina, you typically walk us through that?
I will walk through policy for discussion.
You could run through it? I could run through it.
I could run through it. Well, I'm going to group some, because I think that they fall into just a couple of categories. We have a lot of 400 series policies that are up for their standard review. The majority of them just have minor wording edits. There are four that have more extensive edits than before 10, with family and medical leaves, 413 with harassment and violence, 414 mandated reporting of child neglect, and 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Each of those have more extensive edits to comply with updates to state and federal statute. So, I want to thank Stacy Guyer for her work to keep us in compliance, and as always, thanking Sarah Shandell for managing all of the edits in the organization. For 608, the instructional services, there's minor wording edits, and 813, the aquatics policy is brand new. So, the policy committee has had an opportunity to talk through this several times as we shape it, to make sure that all of our aquatics activities, whether it's classes, or athletic events, or training, have the best kinds of safety that we can provide in terms of lifeguard oversight. So if there are any questions that anyone would like us to take back to the policy committee for our next discussion, I'm happy to take the notes. That's great.
You covered it really well.
Wait, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So, moving on to action items. The first action item is middle school schematic design proposal. Can I get a motion to approve the middle school schematic design proposal?
So-
Do we have a presentation on this? Vaughn?
So as is noted in your packet, you will see that there is, the middle school, if you recall, we had, we were moving along with our middle school design process, just as we did with all of our other sites, and we gave you an update in December that we were pretty far along on. I would say that about a 75 to 80 percent completed, and there was a pause that we took for several months while the middle school design team, in terms of program, finished their work, because there were some questions about how many teams per section or per grade. And so, we just wanted to, since some of those key decisions were advanced in the spring, we reconvened the middle school teams in May, and so Vaughn can kind of walk through where we landed with it, but it's pretty similar to what we showed you in December, but we are looking for advancement of the schematic design to help us move along in the design process.
So, similar to the process that we've gone through with the other buildings, we started by bringing both of the middle school groups together to talk about commonalities between the buildings, look at shared values and commitments. I won't go through each of the steps in here, but provided the groundwork for us, in terms of looking at not only the quality of the space, but also some of the basic organizational components to that, as we talked about the commitments and what we're trying to achieve via the referenda scope and, and goals. We talked about spaces like extended learning environments, and again, these are things that were common to both buildings, that we had the groups talk about together. Went on to discuss media commons and frame that around some of the work that our special media task force worked on, some more criteria around that. Talked about special services and what needed to be in place at both buildings. Both of them have center-based functions and components, and so we spent a lot of time talking about the students and how we would serve those needs. Talked about safety and security, especially important as we looked at Southview and talked about the location of the office facility. Looked at how furniture would integrate with the spaces within the building. And then we got into working with each of the different buildings, because obviously they have very different floor plans, a two-story building versus a three-story building, how they're organized, some similarities, but a lot of differences. And so, we talked about how each one of those would individually have their own criteria, both at Southview and Valleyview. Our referendoscope became sort of our touchpoint, as we started things with the group, and looking at what was included, but not as a given in terms of how things would land. Looked at the site, and looked at the existing buildings as we walked through things with them. I'm skipping through this to get to sort of the meat of the design here. So, in Southview, what we ended up with was a plan where they could, again, organize the building by grades. Doesn't mean that's how it would have to work in the future, but in terms of talking about things from current design, this would be our existing middle level to the building. So currently, our office is in this location, and the office will be moving out of this part of the building. So, eighth grade, or two cluster organizations would occupy this portion of the building. Our media center, like the high school and the elementaries, moves towards more of a learning commons, where we open up a portion of the building. If you're familiar with the building, this is where the coffee area is currently. Our art ended up with extended learning environments that support some of the adjacent classroom spaces. Once we moved to the middle school, like the high school, we have a lot more specialist spaces in the building, and so these extended learning environments were important as breakout for all the different organizations. We were able to maintain the world language component, and this was a result of taking a pause in the process and realizing that at eighth grade and seventh grade, we were likely only going to be using two of the cluster organizations versus three. And so, that gave us an ability to think about how we organize the specialists a little bit differently. Our fax remains in this portion of the building, and most of the, the left half of the diagram here remains as-is. We've got a little bit of different organization for some of the classroom spaces, but we're able to maintain most of the work that was done in 2004 with very little change to that portion. On the lowest level of the building, our office ends up moving down to the lower parking lot. So this is a significant change, which means that our bus entry would be what is now the current parent drop-off. Our parents will now come in off of the parking lot down below, much more intuitive in terms of where you look for the front door to the building. It's where the parking lot actually is. Our cafeteria space remains in this location, but our seventh grade organization is near that office area with a large extended learning environment adjacent to the office. One of the things we talked about was space after school for students, and how they would use the areas. Were able to think about project lead the way and project-based learning on this side of the building, and sixth grade with the three clusters organized around the entire top floor to the building. So we're working a lot with some of the additions that we did in 2011 and 2012 in renovations to the building, and providing a reorganization that would provide the flexibility to the plan that they wanted from a planning standpoint. Valleyview had their own criteria, as they took a look at the building. Again, starting with the referenda diagram and working through things with the building, thinking about it in context of not only the site, but how Valleyview is actually connected to the high school, and some of the things we talked about at the high school, in terms of bus entry and components to the building. Had them looking at the existing plan, and ending up with a schematic design that had a lot of similarities to the Southview plan, despite the fact that it's a two-story building. So, sixth grade occupies the upper floor, seventh and eighth grade down below. Our media center provides a learning commons with extended learning environments off of the stairwells to the building. We found that they're already using those in a makeshift manner, pulling chairs out in that area, so it opens up the corners to the building, gives our sixth grade the environment on both sides, and world language occupies the space in the middle. We found a direct correlation to a lot of our French students coming in, and that transition to the sixth grade program in this building. This area to the building, our gyms, our music spaces, like Southview, remain more or less as-is. We do have security components at the front to the building as we close down the entryway and provide that secure vestibule. Our seventh and eighth grade are organized on either side of the lower level to the building, with our specialist classrooms in the center area. And the entire lower portion to the building here, which has been carved up and subdivided over the years, is going to be reinvented in terms of not only project lead the way, but how they do fax in this area. And looking at fax as really, that is project-based learning, and how you can incorporate that into maybe some different design curriculum and opportunities. A lot of what we talked about with the groups is, the facilities can't drive how you teach, they can only limit what you're able to do in terms of teaching. And so, that became sort of a discussion point, as we worked through with the groups and looked at how the buildings would be organized. I think in the end, the pause that we took, not only did allow us to work on the construction documents for the other projects, but in allowing the programming to get a little bit more caught up, it freed up some of the hurdles that the group saw, and when we met with them again to confirm the schematic design, they were very happy with the changes that were made. They found that it actually, some of the things we were struggling with in trying to fit the three clusters together, made the building too rigid, and so it provided the flexibility that we were looking for.
And I would say that in addition, just as we looked at, you know, when we looked at the scope and the, you know, all the stuff that we're trying to do in terms of adjusting and making sure we're staying on budget, the nice thing was, is that having that opportunity to reconvene with them, we were able to sort of make sure that it's staying aligned to that overall budget that we're looking at at all of our projects. And I think, to me, the biggest thing that kept coming out in the, in the middle schools, and we often hear this from the community as well, is, what are you going to do about those courtyards? And, well, we can't do a lot of things because of state law and code and things, but they are becoming very creative in how they can use those spaces. I mean, we can't just build them into a classroom, and you can't just build them in, but how can we use them in a way that aligns with state statute and code, but doesn't just become this kind of empty space where weeds and things are. So it's a building that, a building, way that they built buildings a lot in the 60s and 70s, and now we just can't use them that same way. But I think that was what I heard in both Valleyview and Southview when they came in, it was like they first had these grand ideas about what we could do with it, and then Vaughn would talk to them about what we can, what we can't do, but.
We simply reframed how they think about them, in terms of, it's actually, it's another classroom or another space to the building, in terms of how code looks at it. And so, we have to have similar exiting strategies, we have to have similar hardware, and that does impact how you think about how you use the space. But they became very creative in terms of how we would open up, maybe extended learning environments to those areas, how you would gain access to those areas, and how it could support some of the curriculum-based exercises that they have.
On the Southview, can you just explain, maybe a little bit further for the community, the rationale for moving the offices, and how it'll be an improvement? And then, in terms of the buses, I know right now, buses, I believe, drop off and pick up in two places?
They actually pick up on three sides.
Three sides.
Due to limitations there. And so, that became as much of a, no pun intended, a driver for it, as the fact that, when we talked with most of the people in the planning groups, they often said, "Well, first I drove to the parking lot, and I couldn't find the front door there. So then I drove to the other parking lot, and I couldn't find the front door there. Then I figured out that it's the, I had to drive up that small hill, and there's on-street parking." And so, we took a look at both of those items, as well as, we really have to think of the east campus as a campus. There's a lot of activities going on here. And not only do we have issues with Southview, we had issues with how parents access Normandale, we had early childhood driving issues, and so we're looking at a parking configuration and a drive configuration that should help clarify all three buildings. And so, moving the buses to the north side of the site allows us to come up with a way of having buses only be on one side to the building. It brings our bus students into a new student common space directly inside the front of the building, and it puts the office on the lower level, where we can actually provide a canopy, give a visual cue to bring parents further onto the site, so we can reduce the amount of car queue space into the area, and it moves things into a location that is both secure as well as intuitive.
Great. Thank you.
So Vaughn, I forget how we budgeted this, but is our goal to spend the same amount of dollars, or is our goal to have two buildings that are equivalent?
The goal is to have two buildings that are equivalent, and they have very different challenges as well. Simultaneous to the bond referenda work is also the long-term facilities maintenance work that overlaps with this. There'll actually probably be three summers worth of work at both buildings, in terms of, if you think about it, both from the maintenance projects, as well as the bond projects going through. We're not necessarily looking at one building as, this is a fixed budget, this is a fixed budget, this is a fixed budget. When we started the design process, as much of a challenge as it was, we wanted to take every building through schematic design simultaneously. So, we had lots of meetings where we were backed up, one, two, three meetings a night, but it was important for us to look at what the overall goals were for every building in the district, so that it wasn't a linear-based process where we would get through phase one, and then find, "Oh, we're short on money. We're going to have to cut back on what buildings in phase two get." And so, it actually provided a way, not only through the design process, but the projects we bid, to readjust, reevaluate, and make sure that we're moving all of the referenda goals through the buildings as a whole, rather than look at everything as individual buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the middle school schematic design proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the public bidding for Concord and Countryside Elementary. Can I get a motion to approve proceeding to public bidding for Concord and Countryside Elementary School projects?
So move?
Second.
Margot, do you have a presentation on this? No?
No presentation tonight. It's just the resolution to proceed, and then when official bids are received, and we have a recommendation, we'll bring that for approval.
Perfect. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the preliminary budget for 2016-17. Can I get a motion to approve the preliminary budget for 2016-17?
So, second.
And Margot, you gave a presentation earlier on this. Do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add unless, but I certainly will answer any questions you have thought of since I presented it.
Are there any questions? Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the preliminary budget for 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the intermediate school district. So, can I get a motion to approve the intermediate school district ISD 287 long-term- can I get a motion to approve the intermediate school district ISD 287 long-term facility maintenance program budget?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
And anybody going to cover this? Margot?
Yes. As I was discussing earlier about the long-term facility maintenance changes, one that came into effect last August or last year with the legislative session was the 10-year plan and the changes of how we do that. It also impacted 287. So, they're required to pass on to their districts their 10-year plan, which the local boards are to approve. And it also delineates our portion that we, Edina, will be responsible for in 287's long-term facility maintenance plan. It'll incorporate into our levy. So, when we're discussing levy in September through December, that will be part of it. It is within a few hundred dollars of what I projected it would be. And the way they distribute it is on average, three-year average of our pupil units amongst different districts.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the intermediate school district ISD 287 long-term facility maintenance program budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the early education recommendations. Can I get a motion to approve those recommendations?
So moved?
Second. And we had a presentation on this earlier by Val. Do you have anything more to add on this? No? Are any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor of voting to approve the early education recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is policy review. We have a number of policies. Can I get a motion to consolidate all of these? So, this would be policy 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 620, and 911 into one motion to approve the revised policies? So moved?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of consolidating those policy reviews, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that's carried. Now, can I get a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? So, I actually have one thing, which is on policy 401, I know we don't deal with the appendix, but the appendix on 401 doesn't match the appendix on 413. And so, when we kind of circle back, you might want to take a look at those administration deals with appendices as opposed to the board. But just to note that there's language changes in some, but not others. Anything else? All in favor of approving policies 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 406, 407, 620, and 911, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're on to information.
We have just routine information items, and that would be pretty straightforward.
All right. Any committee reports, leadership updates? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.